All right, so we've got our council study session. First up, we have Portland General Electric's Smart Grid Test Bed Discussion. That'll be introduced by Peter Passarelli, our Public Works Director, and Natalie Rogers, Climate Action Sustainability Director. And do we have guests?
We do.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Peter Passarelli, the Public Works Director. And this evening, we've invited PGE, our utility partner, to come and give a presentation on the Smart Grid Test Bed that they're in the process of implementing into our community. As you recall, the Smart Grid is one of the strategies that we identified in our Climate Action Plan, one of the 53 strategies. And we've been working with PGE on this project, this implementation, for probably about 18 months or so. Tonight with us, we have Jason Plots and Timothy Treadwell from PGE. They're the resident experts at PGE on this project. And we've been working hard with them. So I'm going to turn it over to them to talk about the test bed.
Great. Hello, council members. My name is Jason Saltmichael. This is Timothy Treadwell. We're from PGE. We're managing this particular project on behalf of PGE and our city partners. I'm hoping that we can have a little bit of a discussion, some back and forth. I'm assuming you have lots of questions. So we'll give you a little bit of background on what this project is all about. And interrupt us at any time if you have questions. Is that all right? Okay, great. There we go. Okay, here's our agenda. We'll go over a little bit of the greenhouse gas goals and how this particular project should help with greenhouse gas goals and the vision for the project and how it might help with the state's and the city's greenhouse gas goals. We'll do a little bit of energy background so we can sort of level, set everybody around how the grid works and what the difference is in a smart grid as opposed to the way the grid traditionally functions, what the challenges are that we're trying to meet. Then we'll go over the test bed project itself. So as you know, because I've seen this in some of your materials as well, these are Oregon's greenhouse gas goals. Under present activities, you can see the red dotted line, we're not likely to meet the state's greenhouse gas goals. It's a little unfortunate that we were unable to pass a cap and trade bill which would have assisted in helping to push that red line down towards the yellow line. In my prior job with the state, I worked on greenhouse gas policy for both Oregon, California, and for what's known as the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. There's a series of, what used to be nine, but now seven states working on a carbon cap and trade system out east. So Milwaukee's goals, as you know, you have a big reduction number coming up here real soon, 2020, about 15% reduction overall. I'm hoping that with our partnership, we can help you meet those goals in a couple of areas. One of the areas is going to be with building energy and energy efficiency. So through the test bed, we'll be testing a series of technologies and practices and engagements with customers to help them understand the benefits of lowering their overall energy bill. So not just their electricity bill, but their overall energy bill. So where they're heating water with gas, they may be able to lower their overall water heating bill by switching to electric. If you are driving an internal combustion engine, you can save quite a bit of money by switching to an electric vehicle. And over the years, I'm sure that we're going to see many, many more electric vehicle options over the road. I know that they're limited at present. Again, with the vehicles and fuels plans that you have, I was just at the, your charging stations that PG has set up here just before I came over here to charge up my own car. And I think that it'll also help with some of your fleet aspirations as well.
Are those charging stations getting used? Do you have any info on the?
Utilization numbers?
Yeah.
I will get your utilization numbers.
Okay.
Is that all right? No one's, they haven't given you information on that yet. I will give utilization numbers to Peter here, and you can pass them along to you.
Okay, great.
If I can add one other thing on that, we're actually taking advantage of another grant program that PG has out right now, the DRIVE.
Drive Change Fund.
Drive Change Fund. And we're going to put in an application for a public charging station to put out at Johnson Creek Campus. That's due August 30th.
Yeah, there's a law that was passed a few years ago called the Clean Fuels Fund that creates credits for switching from high carbon fuels to low carbon fuels for transportation. Those credits, sort of like renewable energy credits or cap and trade credits, are fungible. There's a market for them. You can sell them. We receive those credits anytime somebody powers up at one of the electric stations that we own. And then we use those credits to create new programs for the cities, communities. So I want to level set us a little bit about how the grid functions and what the challenges are. I'm sorry, this is so small. But this thing here, this gray line, this is demand, and you can see it's pretty predictable. It's actually more of a two-hump system. In Oregon, there's a winter, in the winter, you have a morning peak and you have an evening peak, and then there's sort of lag in the middle. But it's pretty predictable. This is Bonneville's system, and the reason I put this up here is it's more illustrative. It's more helpful to see this system than it is ours, just because it's more simplified. You see these two lines down here, this red line and pink line? This is your, what we call, all day, every day, or base load power. This stuff is always on, it's always providing electricity, but it doesn't move well. It's just there. And it serves the load that's always on the system. There's always a certain amount of demand on the system. And so these resources are always on serving that demand. See this line right here, this blue line? Can you see how it moves up and down? This is wind. So traditionally, the way the system worked was that we could use these base load systems, this nuclear, biomass, fossil fuel, to chase the load or the demand, to serve the demand. Demand went up, you ramped things up a little bit with your hydro system to make sure you could meet the peak, whether it was the morning or the evening. The way the system is going to have to work going forward, because we have wind on the system, wind operates when the fuel is there, and we don't control the fuel. With the rivers, we control the fuel to a great extent, but not all the time. With these systems, thermal systems, we control the fuel, so we control the output. But with wind, we don't control the fuel, so we don't control its output. And so what we have been doing for a very long time is using the dams and the rivers to help balance this wind, to fill in when the wind isn't operating and to back down when the wind is operating. In the future, what we need to do with these things called smart grids is use the demand to help balance the wind and to bring on more of this stuff, more of this renewable energy, which we don't control the fuel, so we don't necessarily always control its output. So we have to, we have to be working with the demand, the customers, to help balance the system. So that's what a smart grid does. It helps to balance the system. Before, we were just chasing the demand, and now the system has to balance on both sides, both the supply and the demand. So that's the idea behind the smart grid. So we have a portfolio of resources right now that we're going to be testing inside the test bed.
What's DR?
So DR. DR is some, it's an industry term. It's called demand response. And I know that sounds terrible. We don't like to use it. Like, I demand and you respond, right? That's how it's supposed to work? No. We really don't want that. In fact, Peter helped us when we were initiating this project, at least thinking about this project initially, coming up with a term about getting it, loving it, and forgetting about it. So what we'd really like to do is for customers to be enabled by technologies, and the technologies take care of the customer's comfort levels for them, and make sure that the customer can help with the grid and to help bring on renewables and to help bring down the carbon content of the electricity that serves them and the electricity that's on the system without affecting how comfortable they are. One great program we have is a water heater program. So most of us, most of us get hot water out of our water heaters, right? That's what we buy a hot water heater for. But amazingly, a hot water heater can actually work like a battery to the grid. The grid doesn't know any different, that it's not a battery, but we can, we can contact that water heater, and we can have the water heater move up and down in a certain bandwidth of temperature, thereby using more or less electricity at certain times of the day. And we put, the water heaters now have enough smarts in them to know, based on certain expectations, when you use hot water and when you might need it. So it can provide services back to the grid, which we would pay the customer for, and then the water heater provides hot water to you. So an efficient hot water heater, like a heat pump water heater, super efficient, costs about $150 a year to operate, which is significantly different than electric resistance or a gas water heater. Can provide you with hot water at a really low cost. It can provide the grid with benefits and services, and then we can pay you on a seasonal basis for using your hot water heater. Our hot water heater customers, we call on those hot water heaters hourly, and those customers don't, they don't know that that's what's happening. We haven't gotten a complaint yet. And we have 35, 3,900 units enrolled so far.
So that, I'm sorry, so that requires this new kind of water heater, this, what'd you call it, a heat pump?
A heat pump water heater?
Yeah.
Actually...
Or can you do it with any electric water heater?
We can do it with any electric water heater, yes. Doesn't require a heat pump water heater. You'd save a lot of money by switching to a heat pump water heater. Energy Trust has incentives. We hope to be able to provide incentives for heat pump water heaters in this program. But we can retrofit an electro-resistant, electric resistance water heater. So this is a definition of demand response that we use. This is set by the Power Council. They're a regional organization that works with almost every utility in the four states. And the idea here was to have a very expansive view of what is demand response. So being able to work with your electric vehicle. So if you're plugging your electric vehicle into your home, your electric vehicle is smart enough to know at what percentage it needs to be at for you in the morning when you leave. Well, we can be working with that electric vehicle other hours of the day to help balance the grid. If there's an excess of wind, remember the wind moves whenever the fuel's, if there's an excess of wind on the system, we could be putting it into electric vehicles. If there's not enough, then we can, we can lower the charge rate of those electric vehicles so we're not overtaxing the system. If you have rooftop solar, a battery paired with rooftop solar is going to give both you and the grid a whole bunch of benefits, and you can sell services back to the grid. So there's a whole host of activities inside the concept of demand response, which is what we're trying to work with inside the test bed and get customers engaged with. We're not, when we, when we go out to our customers inside this project, we are not using the term demand response. We're trying to communicate to them what the benefits are of engagement and participation in any of these programs. What are the benefits to the customer? And because this is a new resource for us, we're trying to find out, what are the best ways to engage? How do customers like to participate? What are the technologies that are right for the different types of customers? And what are the benefits of each different type of customer? So when I talked about the concept of demand response presently, we use it as a resource when the grid is stressed at high demand. We try to lower the amount of demand for a short period of time. That's all the way over here on the left of this slide. And remember when I was talking about the water heaters and how we can call those water heaters almost every hour? That's on the right over here. So there is, there's a certain amount of capability that we can get out of any type of resource from the customer side. And the idea again is to, is to build a resource that the customer gets it, loves it, and forgets about it. We don't want to inconvenience the customer. We don't want to put the customer in a position of being uncomfortable for some period of time.
So I don't really understand how to read that. That doesn't, yeah, I don't understand what those flags are.
Energy efficiency. When you buy an efficient clothes washer, that savings is always there. We know it's there, but we can't see it, and we can't really talk to it. We can't really use it for the grid. We can use it for planning purposes. It helps us determine how much demand is on the system. It lowers the overall demand. So if, you know, 10,000 people get efficient clothes washers, it lowers the overall demand on our system, and we don't have to buy additional resources, which means we can keep rates lower. So that's what's all the way over on the left. All the, what's all the way over on the right is, there are certain types of assets, whether it's a water heater or a battery in a house, or a battery at an industrial customer site, or a battery at a commercial customer site, or some of these electric cars. Those types of assets can actually communicate with the grid in every second that they're connected. And because they're connected every second, that means we're communicating with us, and we can talk to them and ask them, do you have any services that you can give us? Can you lower your demand? Or can you take additional electricity if it's on the system? That's the idea, is we're moving from a system where we don't necessarily, we know it's there, but we don't necessarily see it, to a system where we know it's there and we can talk to it and utilize it, just like we use a big generating plan.
So some of the alarm companies have systems where you can have everything programmed and for your phone, you can turn lights on, you can turn your heat on before you get home and that kind of stuff. Is that something you could link into to do this kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's the idea of the smart home.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, so part of the concept of the smart grid is that we have a whole host of smart homes, and all those smart homes are working together, and they're working with the customer, and they're working with us, because they have enough capability to work with all these parties and to fulfill the needs of each party. I don't want to be turning down your lights, though, but I have no interest in that. I really would like to be able to communicate with, if you have an electric car, and I'd like to be able to communicate with your water heater and your HVAC system, your heating and cooling system. Does any of you have a smart thermostat in the house?
Not yet.
Like a Nest thermostat?
I'm in the test bed, so this is my bad.
Okay, no, it's okay.
You don't just mean programmable. What's a smart?
So a smart thermostat is like a Wi-Fi enabled thermostat?
Yeah. It's like the ones you've been, PGE's been advertising, if you have a heat pump.
That's right.
System, you can get one for free and, yeah. I don't know if I have a heat pump or whatever other kind, so.
Yes, we've noticed that in rolling that program out, a lot of our customers don't know the difference between whether or not they have a heat pump or air conditioning because the box looks very, very similar.
I don't know how to tell the difference.
A heat pump will run in the winter. That's the big difference. So yes, if you have a smart thermostat, we want to communicate with the thermostat. And what we end up doing is sometimes we'll precool or preheat the house by a degree or two within your comfort level. And then we will, during the times of peak demand, have you either run a little bit, run the thermostat down or up, depending upon the season, so that you have less demand on the overall system while maintaining your comfort levels. And then we, because you're enrolled in the program, you either get a free thermostat as part of that relationship, or you receive an ongoing seasonal incentive for bringing your thermostat to us, or like enrolling your thermostat in our program.
Jason, can you maybe explain up the top of the chart there, the shape shift shed and shimmy?
Yeah.
That might be, that might help a little bit.
I know what they mean in other contexts, but I'm not sure what they mean with that.
So shaping is like that energy efficiency piece where you get these big giant chunks of savings, and those big giant chunks help us plan, but they're not, they're not, we can't, again, we can't see it necessarily. We can't communicate with it.
It's like if you have a large systemic irregularity in your load, so you're in a warm climate and there's a lot of air conditioning load, and that, that's a consistent peak, it's a consistent problem. If you did an efficiency program that was focused on increasing insulation in the home or improving the efficiency of the air conditioning unit, it would bring down that load in a consistent predictable way. It would reshape your overall annual profile. So that's, that's the shaping of the, of the load. Whereas shifting is like, is during the day, so that would be like, we don't want you to come home and plug in your EV and start charging it by. We would prefer that you charge at midnight when there's less demand. So that's shifting load from a period of peak to a period of off-peak. The shed and shimmie, the shed is more when we have an event that's unpredicted, there's intermittent renewable, clouds come over, solar generation, tanks, or the wind forecast isn't, isn't what we expected. We can call on resources like a large industrial customer, and they can just shed the load, they can turn it off. That's a, that's a traditional demand response. And the shimmy is that, that fast-acting intermittent sub-one-hour where, like Jason was talking about, the water heaters, where we're using a customer-side resource in real time to do load matching to generation. So those are the, those are the four different concepts. And it's a stylized graph, but the, but the triangles are kind of, it shows you the percent of technology, where it's his highest value on the left, and as you move from annual to seconds, the total number, the total amount of technology starts to tail off. So shaping is really great for loads like, that you want to change for a year, but as you start to approach the day or the sub-24-hour, it's, you're kind of getting into the next type of the technology. It is a lot happening there. It's kind of a confusing graph.
So with, with everything moving as quickly as it is and all the electronic opportunities or whatever, I'm not sure just even what to call them, but in fact, thinking of one of the projects one of my grandkids is working on, where you can practically, like you talked about talking to your car, you're talking to a car and talking to our water heaters and stuff, I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot more things that you're going to be able to communicate with. And I mean, one of the products I know that's being worked on is a sensor in soap, laundry soap, that tells you how much they're using so that you can be reminded when to buy another box of it. And you will at some point be able to communicate with things like that, right? And be able to, or maybe not quite that one, but can you imagine?
We don't want to be that intrusive.
I mean, there are those kind of things that are happening.
Maybe Google and Amazon would be interested in that, but...
Well, they are, actually, but, yeah.
We're more interested in the really, the really big parts of your usage, which is your water heater or your car.
And the newer washer and dryers that are coming out, I think, because you...
There was, years ago, there was a project where there was a company, actually, the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory out in Washington had conducted a project where they were using dryers, clothes dryers. It's like, that's a, because that's a pretty big demand. And they were, they would turn off the heating element remotely, but leave the drum running.
Oh, interesting.
But we don't presently have anything that can do that right now. That was a very advanced project from 2002.
But someday, you'll be able to talk to our washers and dryers. I bet you anything.
Yes, I know that some washers and dryers now call home when they're about to break and order a part.
Wow.
Wow.
But we're not, we're not there. As a company, we're not there yet. Those, to us, right now, those, those are maybe secondary or tertiary interests. Right now, we really want to move some of these bigger, and talk to some of these bigger pieces of demand in the home, like your air conditioning demand or your electric car and getting your water heater.
Yeah. So would you, are you looking at, or is there, like, I mean, think about the people that wear, what are they, smartwatches or whatever, where they can tell you almost anything, you know, communicate with those in any way and say, turn down your thermostat or don't use your washer after eight o'clock?
I received a text from PGE to that very...
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, did I? Really? Yeah, see? So that's, yeah, all those kinds of, I mean, it's fascinating what's happening.
So Tim will probably tell you a little bit about those text messages. So we have been communicating with all of the customers in the test bed, both in Milwaukee and Hillsborough and Portland, about when the, when there are times, this summer and then coming this winter, when the grid needs assistance. And we give you, we send you a text message the day before about an event or an opportunity to save money.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And we'll pay you to save electricity during a certain period of time or hours the next day. And when you do that, we, we can tell by your meter how much electricity you've saved, and then we pay you a dollar for every kilowatt hour that you save.
Oh.
Unfortunately, if you're already doing passive cooling techniques, this is probably less beneficial to you. Go me.
Yeah, if you're already being energy efficient, that's a good thing.
That's right.
You're ahead of the curve.
But every, every little bit helps. That's the idea, is that every little bit helps from every, from every customer, and we can aggregate that assistance to help the system and to bring down costs for everybody. That's the idea. So electricity, when it's really hot out or really cold out and everybody's using it, believe it or not, electricity in those periods of time is actually really expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And so it just, when anything's in high demand, it generally costs more. And so when we can lower the demand, we can lower the overall cost of the system. Those costs are served the entire system and then passed along to the customer. And so by having everybody save just a little bit, we can help lower overall rates. We can also help to bring on new renewables, and we can help to lower carbon, because generally, the resources that serve at that really high peak are going to be thermal resources, because we can control them, we can turn them on.
By thermal, it sounds like a good reason.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So Tim, you want to comment on the test bed?
Yeah.
So, so Jason gave kind of the background on the motivations, the kind of the policy landscape that the test bed is being deployed under, and I'm going to talk about the test bed itself. These are just top-level statistics, two-and-a-half-year, $6 million project. It's at three substations, Hillsborough, Milwaukee, and North Portland. And it's a, it's an applied field research study, really trying to understand how to engage customers more effectively and being active participants in the grid. So we started with a baseline survey of residential and business customers in these three areas of the Portland metro area to understand the extent to which they, they grasp the concepts that Jason was talking about, you know, that we have to balance load and generation, that electricity costs more during certain periods of high demand, and that electricity, generally speaking, at scale, is not storeable or dispatchable. It's especially renewable resources. And through this project, we're trying to engage customers, have them understand those concepts, become active participants in load management programs, and ultimately move towards direct load control, those, those types of smart appliances like thermostats and water heaters, so that we can integrate more renewables.
Just to give you an idea, we did a decarbonization study for... Just to give you an idea, we did a decarbonization study for our system. So what would it take to decarbonize our system and get us to that 100% all-the-time renewable system, right? So in that scenario, one-quarter of our system's resources, or 900 megawatts of electricity, would have to come from our customers, from programs like this. In order to meet that zero-carbon goal, we need to enroll almost all of our customers in some way, shape, or form, into some type of program. Right now, we have about 6%. So getting to that sustainable level, and a sustainable, what we call customer value proposition for that engagement and participation is what this project is all about.
Does that 900 megawatts factor in expectation that people will be, that customers will be shifting more of their usage to electricity from natural gas?
Yes.
Coming here, so, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a key aspect of decarbonization for us.
So is it, I see you've got 66% participation, that's what you're trying, hoping to get in each area?
Yeah, we wanted to, and Peter was involved in these discussions, we wanted to...
It's Peter's fault.
We wanted to get a critical mass of customers engaged in the program, so that we could actually learn something. And if typical program participation is, you know, 4% or 5%, and there's a huge bias in that, self-selection bias, and those customers and their values and perceptions of value don't represent the diversity of customers that we would see in the service territory, and we want our lessons to be applicable to the entire customer base. So I'll get into it, we use an opt-out tariff, but we wanted to hit that really large threshold, so that we knew what we were learning and seeing in the field was actually applicable broadly.
Yeah. Here I am, I'm talking about batteries and electric cars, right, and new water heaters. That's only a small subset of our customers that can afford those things. If we're going to a decarbonized system, we need to reach many more different types of customers, including the low-income customers. Those customers that are struggling to pay their bills, we need to offer them answers through technology like this, through programs like this. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to meet those decarbonization goals. Everybody needs to be involved.
And so if somebody didn't have, somebody had gas as their heating, and had, didn't have an electric car, but yeah, they, maybe they have an electric water heater, would you want that person in the program? Or would there not be enough reasons?
Yeah, we would have them, well, let's get into it. So we would definitely, I'm going to skip through this, because these questions are, I can get back to it, but the Peak Time Rebate Program is the default program offering, and this is, this is current, available to every customer with a few exclusions, mostly around metering or previous desires when they're part to be opted out of our marketing. So the Peak Time Rebate Program, and Jason explained this, we benchmark your usage, and we call an event, you can respond however you'd like. If, so that customer that you were talking about, where they had gas heat and electric water heater, if I were that customer and I wanted to maximize my savings and my rebate during that period, I would not use hot water during that period and probably slightly before that period, because you're, there's a lag in the heating, the resistance heating. And they would save significantly relative to doing nothing relative to their baseline. So there's, that's a non, that's what we would call, to use our jargon, behavioral demand response. It's a, it's a non-technology solution. We're saying, letting you know that there's a need for resources, if you can provide resources in any way that you'd like, we will take those resources and pay them for, pay you for them. And you'll see more of our marketing as we go into September, when we're going to be out in the field with our campaigns, but we're saying, you know, go out to dinner, go to the park, get out of the house, just shut everything down, and you'll benefit, we'll pay you for that. And it's a, it's kind of an easy and non-technical way to save.
Tim, but they could also take advantage of the peak time rebate, even if they have a natural gas water heater, by perhaps changing when their washing flows.
Absolutely.
Right, so they're changing their behavior at home and taking...
Yeah, any, any type of turning off lights, computers, anything that you would normally be using during that period of time would establish your baseline. And so if you're altering that behavior, then we'll see it in your metered reading, and you'll benefit from that.
Yeah, because it's, you're not measuring at the hot water heater, or the refrigerator, or the washer and dryer, you're measuring at the meter. So it's really total use in the house.
Yeah.
There's no downside to this, so if you don't participate, you just take service as if nothing happened. Your rates don't change. So it's only an opportunity.
Years ago, in California, there was a program where they, I think they just encouraged us, as usual, back when I lived there, to not, like, use your washer and dryer in a shank of the day, you know, like from 10:00 AM to 6:00 or 7:00 PM or something, and, you know, work on doing that, like, really late at night when the demand was less, and that that brought the energy usage down, and therefore the price down for everyone.
Yeah, so there's two, so I used to be a regulator in California, I'm familiar with these programs, so you're either talking about what's known as a time of use rate, where there's a, you pay a higher amount for every kilowatt you use.
During a certain period of time. Yeah, I think that was it. Yeah, it's been so many years, I forget.
And then at night, it's much lower. So we've been looking into time of use rates, but we've decided to do this peak time rebate because there's no downside, customers aren't punished if they don't participate, whereas with a time of use rate, if we put everybody in the test bed on a time of use rate, some customers' bills would be higher.
Yeah, exactly.
We didn't want that.
Well, so this sounds a lot friendlier.
Yeah, and we defaulted, so the commission gave us the authority to automatically enroll eligible customers in this program. So there's about 19,000 residential customers in the test bed between the three areas, and we went through all the eligibility screenings, and there were about 13,000 and change that we ended up converting. So we did that July 14th, I believe, 15th, we did, we converted them over. So if you guys live in the test bed, you probably got a mailer before that that said this was coming. Hopefully, you got an email after. Some of you got the wrong mailer, I apologize for that.
I got the wrong mailer, and I haven't gotten anything since, no.
No emails?
Nope. Nope. And I will tell you that your guy who answered the phone was, was not very knowledgeable either.
Oh, when you called customer, customer...
Yeah, when I called the number on it, because I got the business mailer, I got the business, the mailer designed for businesses. And I called him, and I said, well, I'm residential, and then I said, well, so I have a gas heater, I have a gas furnace, I wouldn't be a candidate for this, right? And he goes, yeah, that's probably right. So does that sound like the answer you're giving?
No. And, yeah, please provide that feedback. Part of this, we're learning, we're trying new programs, we're definitely stressing PGE systems in all the ways, engineering, interpersonal, program design and delivery. So that feedback's more than welcome, strongly encouraged, yeah.
Yeah, so two of us live in the test bed.
Yeah, test room.
Peter.
Oh, yeah, Peter does, yeah.
So during our recent Carefree Carfree Sunday that we had a week ago, week and a half ago, at Wichita Park, where I spent most of my time, there was a booth of PGE, and I thought, I'm pretty sure it was this that they were signing people up for, would that be correct? Because it was, you know...
Although that wasn't the area.
Using things, you know, peak time, or, you know, not using them at peak time.
That's from Pangor for renewable...
Oh, that was the...
Was that something different?
The green tariff.
The green area.
Well, there's Green Source, which is the residential programs, they probably did have a booth, Green Mountain Energy for that one. There may have been, there has been advertising going out for the peak time rebate for everyone outside, even the test bed territory.
Yep. And Green Mountain's doing some enrollments for that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I signed up, it sounded like a good deal, you know, it's like, why not? Try to help any way you can, but...
Well, that's, that's good.
But, yeah, but, but I, you know, when I first saw the information about this, I was thinking it was the same thing, but it sounds like it was something that was a little bit different.
Yeah, so...
I don't know, because I haven't received anything from PGE since I did that, so...
We, the Peak Time Rebate Program exists in, exists both within the test bed and outside the test bed. Within the test bed, every, all of the residential customers that were eligible, as Tim was saying, were signed up.
Yeah.
They didn't have to do anything. For others outside of the test bed, it's voluntary, you have to sign up.
Yeah, yeah. That would be good.
Are you working with our NDAs for connecting with residents in Island Station? So they're, the picnic is coming up.
I was going to say something about, September 7th is the Island Station Neighborhood Association picnic, and that would be a great place to do some outreach, because everybody there is in the test bed area.
Have a table, have a...
Yeah. And they all show up. I mean, it's a very well-attended picnic, sometimes.
Right now, we're doing the...
I like it.
You said the 7th?
Yeah.
This is, I'm sorry, you know, I repeat, the Island Station...
Neighborhood Association. I can, I can send a link to...
That's great.
If I have an email contact, I can do that.
Great. Yes, thank you for that.
Yeah, First Friday's great, too, yeah. First Friday, you'll get more than, you know, we'll just be...
Tim will go over this, but we are hiring someone that will be embedded here in the offices and will be working in your neighborhoods to better understand the customers and how customers are receiving this project and the programs that are inside the project.
And we're housing that staff person, correct?
Yes.
Just so you know. So they'll be out at Public Works.
Yep. So this is, conversation frankly is more interesting than going through a slide deck, so I skipped a bunch of stuff. I think that what I skipped basically was, we're marketing to people to let them know our goals, and the first thing, proactive step we did was put people on peak time rebate. We want them to experience that, hey, it matters when I use electricity, and if I act in the way that's good for the grid, there's a financial benefit to me. And right now, maybe it's turning off my lights, or changing when I use my laundry, or whatever, but there will be technological solutions coming as well, and we'd like people to kind of migrate from completely unaware to aware, engaging behavioral programs, to adopting technologies to the extent that they can afford them, or they're useful for their particular circumstance. This kind of gives you a sense of our overall project timeline. So I said that we mistakenly, on the 15th, on the 13th, we enrolled everyone in peak time rebate, which you can see up here. We're onboarding those outreach staff in the middle of next month, and they'll be in the community. And we're rolling into our active campaigns starting in the fourth quarter of this year. So you guys will see a lot of things in the community, you'll see billboards, there'll be print ads, folks out in the community, web ads, banner ads, talking about our programs. And the design is to, the design is to try different framing. So we want you to do the same thing in every case, which is understand when you're using energy and how, and change it for the benefit of the grid. And there, the first quarter, we're going to do that in a very traditional utility way, which is, if you do what we would like, we will give you money, which is how the utility generally interacts with our customers. And we do that through thermostat incentives or demand response programs, paying you to let us control your thermostat or the peak time rebate. Very traditional. As we roll into the first quarter of next year, we're going to change the framing slightly and say, if you would like, you can take your peak time rebate incentive and give it to a nonprofit. So we'll have a list of nonprofits that customers can choose from, and customers can donate their peak time rebate. So peak time rebates are a couple bucks per event, but if everyone in a neighborhood contributes to a nonprofit, that can be a measurable impact, especially over a season we call multiple events. So we want to understand the extent to which redirecting those relatively small amount of incentive dollars, aggregating them up together, and sending to a nonprofit, if that results in customers participating more and participating deeper. Same thing in the renewable energy and the community engagement, customer value proposition, where we'll start doing some community competitions, comparing Milwaukee to Hillsborough, Hillsborough to North Portland, and seeing if we can get a little friendly competition between the neighborhoods to see if people are motivated then to do more. Also, this was a little, it's combined there, there's a renewable energy, it says RE. For those who actually have enabling technology, like the heat pump water heater, or electric resistance water heater with the smart switch, would those people turn over control in order to allow us to integrate more renewables? So allow us to preheat your water when, when the wind is blowing, when we have excess renewables on the grid, instead of sending it to California, or curtailing it, shutting it down. In the third quarter, the framing will be around greenhouse gas abatement, so kind of making that link that Jason said, that, you know, when, when the system's peaking, we're generally turning on fossil-fuel-based plants, and really explaining that to customers and saying, this isn't just good for the grid, if you, if you reduce your usage, you're saving us money, you're getting a rebate, and you're reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Again, see if that kind of moves the needle. And then finally, our last campaign is the, going back to the giving back that we did the first time, which is coming in Q1, and just taking the lessons learned from that first campaign and tweaking it so we can go back to the field. Because we think that one has a lot of promise, so we want to do it twice, apply our learnings and see if we can deliver a bigger impact. From there, we kind of were regulated utilities, so we launched into our evaluation period, and our evaluator will come back and look at the data and say, here's what we found. But we're actually engaging our evaluator throughout this process, so we can learn at the end of each quarter, and if we find really impactful results in our messaging campaigns, we want to roll those into our service territory-wide learning. So in a really, in a real way, Milwaukee and Hillsborough and North Portland, you guys are helping us optimize our program delivery and messaging, and kind of taking the learnings from this test bed and pushing it out to the rest of the service territory. Down here at the bottom, these are, these are products that are coming out on the market. So right now, we have smart thermostats available, multifamily water heaters are available, peak time rebate. Those are the things that we have in market. And we have a plan to get additional products in market, so those will be coming out in the next couple quarters. It's a lot to digest, but that's the timeline.
Like, we have a new apartment building going in downtown, is there any work with them to try and get them?
Is that the one up by the golf course?
Axle Tree.
Axle Tree, it's on, no, it's downtown Milwaukee, it's on Washington and, yeah, Main. It's the five-story, it sticks up over everything else in downtown.
You're thinking of Waverly Greens with the solar installation.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. That one's actually across the street from the test bed, it's just outside, it pains me.
I know.
There's another one in North Portland where the guy called me, he's like, I want to do all the things, and I was like, I can't help you, I'm really sorry.
Well, so that's, I mean, they did the rooftop solar, which was awesome, but, no, this is a brand-new building under construction that's supposed to open in October or November, so they're putting in all-new appliances.
I would love to talk to them.
They seem to be the, somebody to talk to to get...
Definitely. If they're, if they've broken ground in their building, they probably have a budget and a plan that...
I think they've already installed.
Everything's installed.
Yeah, but I'm definitely open to talking to them. And Jason and I are trying to, we're, we have latitude from the commission to try different things, and we don't have the traditional cost-effectiveness requirements that we would normally have, because they want us to learn, and they don't mind if we fail. So I'm happy to talk to anyone. So we have about 10 minutes left. So this is kind of, we've been working diligently, and we're about to go to, a lot of work happened before we even got to the PTR conversions, just to say that we've been active. These are the test bed areas, so this was called overlooked, now we're calling it North Portland, to be a little more accurate. And the reason these are so weird, and they look like a gerrymandered congressional district, is because this is the, this is the current routing of our distribution infrastructure served by a particular substation, and it doesn't follow any logical political lines or boundaries, it's just engineering. Hillsborough, and down here in southern Hillsborough, there's a massive new development going on, and one of the products that we're working on is a new, is a residential new building bundle, where we're trying to put all these technologies together, working with the builder. So when the home, when the homeowner purchases a home and walks on the door, they have a smart thermostat connected, a water heater, an EVSE that's ready to do charging, and it's solar-ready with storage. So trying to see if we can cram all that in there, it's not... There's not a ton of new building happening in the, in the Portland metro area outside of this, but in the service territory broader there is. And one of the reasons that we picked Hillsborough, actually, I should get to that. The three test bed areas together represent the diversity of our, of our customer base. So North Portland's kind of that traditional, smaller craftsman twenties, thirties customer, gas heat, not a lot of big loads. Hillsborough's new construction, bigger homes, wealthier customers. And Milwaukee is where all of our diversity is. We have multifamily, single family, old homes, new homes, mobile homes, small businesses. So this, this portion of the test bed is, I think, has the, the most interesting opportunities for learning. And we're kind of leaning on this community to give us that diversity of perspective. And Milwaukee, which we talked about. I have a picture at the end. I realized this is not Milwaukee. I realized this is a little bit of Milwaukee, a critical part of Milwaukee and Oak Grove. And I have a map that shows you kind of where that line is. I'm sure you guys are all well aware of where that, where that line is. But we say Milwaukee because it includes your downtown. And Peter's been great and super active participant in the program. So we're calling it the Milwaukee section of the test bed. And if you're interested, or your constituents are interested, there is a easy to find test bed webpage. And there are interactive maps, and you can type in your address, and you can see exactly where you fall in or out of the boundary. Jason mentioned that we're hiring community representatives. We're in the process of interviewing them now. Interviews are actually this week, the first round, and Peter's going to participate in the second round. And we're trying to find folks that have experience doing outreach, folks that have experience working with diverse communities that are bilingual, that can really get out and help us understand how your, your constituents are interacting with our programs. And, and if they, if they get it, if they understand it, if we're meeting their needs, and make sure that we're getting as much learning as possible. And kind of in conjunction with these community reps, which are special PGE employees who are just focused on this, we're also working with our existing employees who do everything from, they work in a line crew or they're in the customer call center. Anyone who is a Portland general employee and lives in one of these three test beds is part of, it has been invited to be part of our ambassador program. And our thinking here is, these guys are part of the community, and they're going to be on Nextdoor, they're going to go to the farmer's market, they're going to experience this like, like your citizens are going to experience it. So they will be able to provide us better insights than any paid employee could who's kind of out there knocking on doors, talking to folks. So we're hoping they'll be our eyes and ears. And this is already up and running. We've, we're engaging them. They, they're up to speed on what we're doing in the test bed. They've seen a very similar presentation. If they're eligible, we've given them smart thermostats, they can experience the technology. So they're ready to answer questions and kind of be frontline ambassadors. Almost done talking. Phase two, so I had that timeline, and it ended, and so we're going to start evaluation. As we approach the end of that timeline, we're going to be engaging with the commission to have a phase two of the test bed, which is going to be more focused on advanced technologies. So smart inverters for solar, more storage, active load management, where we're, instead of doing seasonal event calls, we're kind of controlling stuff all the time. And we're, we're moving towards, taking another big step towards that active load management matching with intermittent renewables. And this is part of our larger smart grid plan. And this is the map I referred to, this is the last slide. But I just wanted to show you guys, this is zoomed in. The test bed is based on everything served by the Highland Substation. And the city boundary actually cuts right through the middle of that substation, which I thought was pretty interesting. So, so a little more than half of it is actually south, but it hits downtown. And it's a pretty critical customers and loads in Milwaukee. And that's all I have. If you guys have questions.
Fascinating.
I think we're pretty good at asking questions during presentations. We're right on, four minutes early, so.
Thank you for the partnership. The team has talked about how great it's been working with you. And we're excited to see what comes out. So thanks for choosing Milwaukee, and we're, we'll be there with you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
And Council President, I need to excuse myself.
Yep, thank you. So next up, we have Home Energy Score Program. Same faces.
Same faces. I'm actually going to turn it over to Natalie to, to, to talk about, follow up some of the questions that we had from our last presentation in July, mid-July that we gave, we're on the Home Energy Score. We wanted to follow up on the questions that we, we had. There were also some things that I don't think we got a chance to cover that night because there was a lot that we, we had there. So I'm going to turn it over to Natalie. She's going to take it over.
Going to the power. She's going to fight with the computer first. All right. Well, hey, guys. My name's Natalie, Climate Action Sustainability Coordinator for the city. As Peter mentioned, you know, we, we came to you guys in July with this program. And I wish we had five more hours to talk about it. But hopefully, we can at least touch on an overview of it and then the specific questions and asks you wanted staff to go and explore. So I just want to set the framework for why, you know, why we're so interested in this program. So, you know, as, as you are aware, we adopted carbon reduction goals. And that's both complete carbon neutrality by 2050. But even in the immediate future, we have carbon zero by 2035 from electricity and by all building fuel types by 2040, which is right around the corner. So in our greenhouse gas inventory, which is this pie chart on the right, you can see that residential buildings is 18% of our sector-based emissions. So that is the energy that you're using in your home. And the hard part about that is a lot of it, we cannot control, right? So it's not like we can make people sign up for a renewable energy program. And so the best way to control emissions coming from the residential sector and the easiest way is through conservation, so energy efficiency. So energy efficiency is just decreasing the amount of energy you have to use to do the same task, right? So an energy efficient appliance, for example, you don't have to use as much electricity or gas or any other fuel type to do the same job that you would with a more energy hog appliance. And the homes are the same way, right? So we have insulation, different types of windows, building structures that make a home more energy efficient. But the hard part is, that's really difficult to see, especially if you're not familiar with insulation types or you're not familiar with the differences between windows. I know I'm not. So what came out of this awareness that people have a hard time visioning energy efficiency is a methodology from the US Department of Energy to score residential buildings on how energy efficient they are. Make it really simple, give them a 1 to 10 score. And that's the Home Energy Score Program. There's a whole bunch of other different types of certification programs that exist out there that have existed through time. The federal program started in 2012. It's a methodology, really. And then cities, as well as states, can adopt it as a, as a voluntary or a mandatory program to implement in their own communities, which is what Milwaukee is interested in doing. That's what Portland did. Berkeley down in California. Austin, Texas also has a different program that works through their utility. The difference is that they, you know, control their own utility. And so it's, they have some differences in program framework as well. So Portland, though, is a, is a prime example. So they started their program in 2018, January 1st, 2018. And they see it as a way to encourage energy efficiency in the home through operational behavior. So operational is when you're turning on and off your lights, right? It's like what you do day to day. Encourage an energy efficient housing market. So having customers or buyers, when you're out there looking at homes, just generally aware of the energy efficiency in a clearly explained way. And then as well as providing residents pathways to, to make retrofits on their own homes. So we'll go over the scorecard really quickly again. But the scorecards have recommended retrofits that have a 10-year payback on them. And it provides a financing pathway for you to actually make those retrofits. At a point in time, when you're buying a house, where you're already going to be investing in a home, you're already opening up those new loan products. So this is just kind of like providing you more benefit and just at the right time, so if you want to participate, you can. And so looking at the, the benefits of a Home Energy Score Program, the challenge of having an 18% emission sector from residential buildings, Milwaukee Climate Action Plan directly called out adopting Portland's Residential Energy Score Program, which is why we're here today. So just to go briefly over again, what the Home Energy Reports and Scores look like. So the Home Energy Score Program consists of full reports, which has a score in it. So the reports are that piece of paper, it's a two-sided piece of paper, and the score is just from 1 to 10. The report has all that information. It breaks down the estimated utility costs based on the assets of the home, as well as the carbon emissions of the home, as well as the additional retrofit opportunities. The score is just 1 to 10. So it makes it really simple if you're just browsing a bunch of different home types. The methodology from the US Department of Energy is an asset-based score. So home assets, you can see on the bottom of that triangle. Those are things that when you're buying the house, they're coming with the house, right? It doesn't take into account when you're turning on and off lights or using, like leaving your windows open, right? It doesn't look at utility bills because, for one thing, that's a lot of personal information on your utility bills. But another thing is when you're buying a house, it doesn't matter what the family before you did, because you might be acting totally differently. And so you can see the scorecard on the very right. And it's broken down. And this is the Oregon Department of Energy version, which is what Milwaukee's would look like. And the key thing with this is that the methodology that the US Department of Energy created, the idea is for it to be general, so it can apply to all different types of housing, all different types of climate. Replicable, meaning that it's a very kind of calculated methodology that any assessor can go in and do, and affordable. So it doesn't do blower door tests, it doesn't do really complicated testing that would keep the assessor in your home, therefore costing you more money. Especially in a market like Portland, which is pretty saturated in assessors. How, these assessments range from about $140 to, you can see somewhere up in the 200s, but it's usually $140, $150 is what I've been seeing through browsing around assessor costs.
Are these, before you leave this slide, so is there any relation to, other than just, you know, the assets around the bottom and behavior sort of at the top? Is there any relation to, you know, like things being lower on the pyramid? I mean, the way that it looks, you know, is there a relation to sort of, you know, location on the triangle and size of the square?
Yeah.
Sorry, polygon?
Sorry, I wasn't great at geometry.
And, and their effect on scoring?
You know, I'm not sure. This is out of the US Department of Method, Department of Energy's methodology handbook. I would not be surprised if there was. Just looking at it, it looks like it's more shifting upwards in behavior, right? So like a heating, hot water ducts and cooling, that's all like around personal comfort, right? So it has, maybe it's more adjustable versus something like local climate and number of stories, which is fairly permanent in terms of their effects. That's what I was reading out of it. I could definitely look at it, and I'll send you that methodology if you want to look at it in more detail.
Well, yeah, because some things like orientation are on there, which we've been told they're not taking into account in this kind of assessment.
And we'll go over that.
Yeah. So I mean, that's kind of interesting that they even put that on there.
Because I think what it is, is these are all of the assets of the home that contribute to the score, whether or not they go in and score them, like local climate, right? So you're not going to get a change in your home's energy efficiency based on the climate that you're in. Instead, it's how is your home prepared for that climate, which is consistent no matter where you are. And that all ties back to the replicability of the methodology.
So in this pyramid, the, the three bottom layers are the only ones that are used in the Home Energy Score.
Correct.
Because the other two are the things that you said aren't, don't really, like behavior of who's going to live in the home and how many lights they use.
Exactly.
When they turn them off and on and.
Right.
And all of that kind of thing. But I'm kind of surprised that appliances are not down.
It's because people take them with them, right?
Oh, okay.
So it's easy to remove. And that's taught, well, we'll talk about, a little bit more about vegetation. But the permanence of the asset is really what's important for the score.
So where's.
Scores can be eight years, they last eight years.
So where does the $1,257 come in? How do they arrive at that figure if they're not looking at utility bills? And I can't see the rest of it down there.
They look at average utility rates for the region. So Oregon has cheaper energy than California. So that's going to factor into that estimated utility cost based on the assets that they score in the home. What they don't want to do is say Natalie with her two cats is going to use the same amount of energy as a family of eight, who's going to move in afterwards.
Exactly. Well, that was one of my concerns on it. I thought, how can?
Right.
There's no compatibility comparison, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
So what, is there, their energy cost? Are they using a family of four or something?
So they're using the average utility rates. And then they estimate the average household size, right, of your region. And then that's how they generate the energy costs.
So is that only electricity? Or is that electricity and natural gas, but not water and stuff like that?
So it's just energy, fuel. So it's going to be oil, natural gas, energy. And then they also will take out some money if you have solar, right? So they say, oh, you're going to be making that back in credits.
And what about if you have a fireplace? And you use a fireplace more so than you turn on a heater? There's no way to measure that, wouldn't you think?
Well, those, those are being phased out.
Yeah, I don't know if they take in wood. But I'll ask about that, about like wood fireplaces. I can ask about it.
Yeah.
I, I, one thing on the scorecard that I did want to put out. So that, that, that score there shows a six.
That's where what?
The, the score on this scorecard shows a six. The energy score for that home is a six. The nationwide average, and I think even in Portland, is a four.
4.3 in Portland is what they've been averaging, 4.7 nationwide. I think 4.7.
Okay.
Okay. So, so for one thing, I also wanted to mention, so this, the scorecard is shown at time of listing. So these programs kind of shift depending on when people are required to get a score. Sometimes they're time of closing when you're selling a house, sometimes they're time of listing. Portland's is time of listing. We're interested in time of listing as well because not only are there potential benefits for people if they'd like to make these retrofits, right? There's potential benefits of people reducing their energy uses if they go in knowing how much the house may be using. But more than anything, this is just added information when you're shopping for a home, right? So the nice part, the difference between time of closing and time of listing is that by the time you're already at time of closing, you've already invested in that home, right? You're not going to walk away from anything. And, and I know there's some questions about home inspections and why, why can't this be roped to a home inspection? Well, it can for that amount of cost, but you're already paying for the home inspection, right? So it's going to be a difference of, it cost me, I think, $450 for my home inspection versus $150, and I would have known I'd be spending over $2,000 on utility costs, right? So it's just more consumer protection when it comes into having these available on a publicly advertised home listing.
Yeah.
It seems to me like it would also be easier to, if you were going to make some changes, wrap those costs into the mortgage negotiations with your bank when you know it at time of listing versus time of closing. Because you're pretty far down the road with the bank by the time you're closing.
Absolutely. And I mean, it's the same as when we're talking about like renewable energy programs, right? If you're a business and you're setting up a new business in Milwaukee, the opportune moment is when you're setting up, right? Like, you're already calling PGE, you're already going to be asking them to set up a new account. It's just a lot easier for you to wrap in, oh, and by the way, can it be green sorcerer? Can it be clean wind? Versus if we came to somebody who is in their home and they didn't want to talk to a bank on a Wednesday, if we said, hey, here's these financing options, it's just not convenient, right? Well, the ideal situation like this is it's convenient, right? You're already kind of going through this complicated process. Here's a little bit more information for you on the start of it, rather than being already in the weeds. And so, and it's also, so it's a publicly advertised listing. And I know that there were, was a, a statement that was submitted asking about Zillow's program on make me move listings, which is where you post a higher than market home sale price. So that's still a public listing for a house, right? So even though you may not take an offer less than, you're advertising your home for sale, which is why this information would want to be out there. So this is the Home Energy Score Program flexibility. So we know that our neighbors to the northwest, the inferior neighbors of Portland, because Milwaukee is superior, they have a Home Energy Score Program. because Milwaukee is superior, they have a home energy score program. And so, they did a lot of work on their home energy score program to talk to the real estate industry and to talk to regional stakeholders, and that's how they got to where they were. If Milwaukee wants to implement a program, we just want to make sure we have something that's compatible with that program, considering that a lot of Portland addresses are actually in Milwaukee, and some Milwaukee addresses are already in Portland. And you're going to have Realtors working in both markets. And so, the nice part about the program that we've brought to you today is that it aligns fairly well with Portland's program, but there's still these points of flexibility. So, the program foundation is based on that methodology that's from the federal government, which can't really change without being of deviation and a totally new methodology and a new program.
And you said there's a, there's actually a state program.
So, all the state is doing is serving as like a proxy partner. So, when you are the size of Portland, right? So, Portland can partner directly with US Department of Energy. And there's a list of requirements to participate and partner and use this methodology. That stuff like you have to have at least 500 listings, you have to have people doing quality assurance, you have to have all of these checks and balances in place, which is a lot of resources for smaller communities. Oregon Department of Energy is interested in helping smaller communities implement this program. And so, for example, Oregon Department of Energy already contracted with Earth Advantage to do quality assurance and quality checks. And so, by serving as a proxy partner, so we're partnering with Oregon Department of Energy, who's partnering with US Department of Energy. We don't have to have those listing number requirements, so we don't have to meet a minimum number or quota. We don't have to do our own quality assurance. Essentially, they're just going to have a lot of other smaller communities in the region. Beaverton's interested, Corvallis is interested.
Nobody's done it yet?
Well, Portland has done it, but Beaverton and Corvallis are in the process of exploring. I've been participating in a working group, and they're essentially in the same process of us as trying to figure out how it suits their communities and bringing it to their elected officials. A lot of other communities are waiting until they adopt a climate action plan in order to actually kickstart it, but it's in a lot of people's climate action plans.
And Eugene has a voluntary program.
I would have expected Eugene to have one, and Ashland probably.
But they also, they have a different relationship, because they are the utility versus us, where, you know, we work with PGE.
But why, but why would that, why would that be different on a voluntary basis? Why would that affect whether or not it could be a voluntary?
I thought it was voluntary if we do it.
No, it's definitely not voluntary if we do it.
It doesn't, it's, yeah.
At least that's not the program that we've been presented.
The voluntary program that Eugene has isn't affected by the relationship with the utility.
No, and it's also.
So, that's still flexibility here.
But it's a different type, I believe it's a different type of certification program as well. It's still an energy efficiency certification program, but I don't know if it's the same US Department of Energy methodology one. So, there's a bunch of different types of certification programs that exist. Earth Advantage has a home energy efficiency certification program that they were hosting. Energy Trust of Oregon has an energy performance score program. The, the nice part about this one is that it's, it's really well-known now. It's replicable, and assessors are already trained to do it. So, there's more, there's a cheaper way to get it done rather than contacting Energy Trust of Oregon and having to go through their more extensive program.
And again, it meshes with what's already expected in the market, because Portland has adopted this.
Yes, absolutely. And so, the mandatory program, so that just means that people are required to do it when they're listing their house. Once again, this isn't just everyone in Milwaukee needs to get it done right away. It's only as people's homes are listed. And then it's at time of listing rather than time of close on the mortgage. But you can see compliance, the administrative processes, the exemptions, the scorecard appearance, low-income assistance, all of these we can put our own touch on, right? We can change the, everything except for essentially the basics of this program. And the reason why we can't change the methodology is because it's the US federal government methodology, and it'd be really difficult and a long process. And we'll go into touching on some of the other requests that you guys looked for us to explore. But what I do want to mention is, so compliance, so if we would like, so Portland's program has a 90-day compliance window. So, they get a notice of violation, they have 90 days before, there's a $500 fine.
So, what does violation mean?
Meaning staff is going checking a public listing, and there's no home energy score on there. So, then they get notified that, oh, hey, you're in violation of city code. You have 90 days to fix it, or else you're going to get a fine.
And I do want to make sure that we look at what that time of listing actually means and what triggers that, because I don't, I mean, you know, that definitely, the issue raised, you know, with the question about make-me-move, that is not, that's not a listing. Your home is not listed for sale.
Yeah, so anytime you're, anytime you're advertising a home for sale, like a make-me-move, a lot of times you have to, that is a public listing. So, you are, there's a, the terminology in the real estate industry and how the city code in Portland defined it, there needs some clarification on public advertising. But that's how they've been moving forward, is essentially when you're publicly advertising, even if it's like an A-frame sitting in front of your house saying, this house is for sale, and there's no online posting, that's listing your house for sale. In the real estate industry, time of listing could begin even before the home is publicly advertised. But the way that the code is written, it enforces the public advertisement, not the, the process of listing your home with a real estate agent or a broker, or if you're a construction site and you're building homes, but they're not publicly listed for sale yet.
But that's one of the questions, I think, that came out of our last meeting, which was, you know, we might like, we might like to explore an option of what time of listing means and who, who's getting enforced on, right? I mean, last time we talked about this, we talked about potentially, you know, the, the person who's being enforced on is actually the listing agent.
So, we'll go over that for Realtors as the regulated party. There are some challenges with that, but we can continue to explore it. So, so there's still some flexibility for all these. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to break down the questions that you asked of us to explore further, and then bit by bit, we'll see what suggestions you have. So, these are the ones, these are the key takeaways from the July 16th work session. There was trees and exterior home features, so awnings, balconies. There's exemption modifications, so exemptions, those are the situations in which someone does not need to get a home energy score. There's the Realtors as the regulated party, and then there's the low-income assessment portion of this. So, trees, I'm going to break it up to trees and exterior features. So, trees are non-permanent structures, especially in Milwaukee, when we don't have a private property tree code right now. Which means tomorrow, somebody can take down a tree on their, in their property. These scorecards are good for eight years. So, that's a lot of time for people to, to change the vegetation on their home. The, also, the issue with trees being included in the home energy score program is their seasonality, right? So, in the wintertime, it's going to be more difficult to see what species of tree it is. But then also, a tree may fill out and provide more shade during the summer versus the winter. So, those utility costs are going to change, and the impact on the home energy efficiency will change over the seasons. In addition, it's going to change the affordability of the assessment, because the assessor now has to go out and assess the vegetation on the property. And they also have to have some training in vegetation identification, right? You need to know what's a broadleaf and evergreen, and how that's going to impact the energy efficiency of the home for both windbreakings as well as shading. And then the ubiquity of the home energy score assessment, that also ties into the fact that different types of vegetation are going to have different impacts on energy efficiency. So, even, this is a federal methodology. So, Arizona's methodology for tree and vegetation impacts are going to be vastly different than Oregon's, based on the different species at play. And then, so, if we were to ask US Department of Energy to go through and add in trees and vegetation, that would kickstart a whole different redevelopment process, because the packet for their methodology, how it, how it works is, is pretty thick. And so, they'd have to redo all of their calculations and, but if we're interested, we've asked Earth Advantage and Oregon Department of Energy if they would want to ask that conversation, start that conversation. But I think the issues mentioned before revolving around the non-permanence and the seasonality and the additional costs might dissuade people from including them in the methodology. But one solution that we may have is working to add a disclaimer on the scorecards. Essentially acknowledging that trees can be energy efficient, and that for more resources, go to this site. And essentially just starting the conversation as you're looking at the scorecard, that trees have value to the energy efficiency of the home. The thing is, these scorecards, since we're partnering with the state to help with this program, there's a stakeholder group that Milwaukee's a part of. We essentially just have to get stakeholder group buy-in to say, hey, is this okay? To add this disclaimer. I'm sure it would be fine, because it would just be, you know, local flavor to the scorecards. But that's something that we might just have to make sure we get stakeholder agreement on.
So, trees, I mean, I think, I mean, you kept using the word vegetation, and I think it really, we are talking about trees and not, you know, shrubs.
Right.
And shrubs have some windbreak value, I guess, potentially. But the trees that have, you know, that contribute to cooling a home or keeping or protecting a home from winds are necessarily pretty big, pretty mature trees, right? They're not going to be your, you know, little thing you planted two years ago. Yes, people can take them down. Yes, trees get diseased, they get harmed by weather, you know, there, there are things. But I think, you know, most people who have a large tree close to their home to give shade are not going to be taking them down. Certainly, I think the eight-year, you know, if this was a forever thing, that might be different. But the eight-year thing, you know, I would bet that, you know, the vast majority of the trees are still there after eight years. So.
So, I, I, I think really that the big, the big part of this, it's just not part of the home energy score methodology that was developed by the Department of Energy. And, you know, the certification process that the assessors go through, the training process, that's not part of what they assess. So, to add that to that, without everybody else doing it, it's, it's like a really, it's an impossible lift for Milwaukee to do that. So, I think, you know, what Natalie was suggesting and what we thought about was, you know, adding some language to our personalized Milwaukee home energy scorecard about, you know, hey, trees in your yard provide benefits, you know, the shading, windbreaks. And those are things that affect how you use energy in your home is the way to handle it without changing the assessment methodology and protocols or, because there's just really not a meth, not a way for us to do that on our own.
I think there, there might be other disclaimers then, that, that would be valuable if we're, you know, that I think could, could help alleviate some of the concerns, at least that I have, around, you know, some of the discussion that we had about, you know, a DIYer like me, who might insulate her own home and not have a receipt, because you know what a receipt looks like after just a couple of years in a box. It's completely faded, you can't read it. Therefore, I have zero evidence that I've done this work. I think that, you know, some disclaimer that, that says, you know, that, that these, that these, that the inspections have limitations, and some description about what those limitations are, that, that there was no physical inspection of things like insulation or, you know, even windows. You're not even, you're not even physically inspecting the windows. Someone could have, you know, got a great deal on some windows from their brother-in-law, you know, and put, and installed them themselves. None of that is being reflected on this thing. Those are the things that I have a hard time with. It's sort of like the real life.
Well, the windows are visible, right? So, they get judged.
But what I understood from the last time is that it's your receipt, and it's, it's what tell, what you see on the invoice.
So, if it's visible, like a window, so what, they're just not opening walls. Just the same as you get a home inspection, they're not opening walls, right?
So, then, okay, so then ductwork, things like that. There are lots of things that are being included on the score that are not physically inspected.
So, just as with a home inspection, where a lot of it is at face value, the nice part is you're not invested in this home when you're looking at these home energy scores at this point, right? So, this is information that's just available to you when you're browsing, right? Different homes for sale. It's true that there's going to be inclusion of projects that aren't accounted in the home energy score, right? But I think that's the, the replicability and the ubiquity of this, is that it's surface level, right? It's cheaper than in home inspection, because they don't go into that much detail. You're right, there needs to be some outreach and messaging regarding what does this score really mean? What's potentially not included in this score? We'll talk about that with exterior features as well. But the, the, the goal of this is just to be very broad and general. And there is going to be a lot of stuff that's not included in the fine details. A lot of times, it's mostly the insulation. That's the challenge, because you can't, you know, open up walls to look at it. And if you didn't keep a receipt for any insulation that you did, they just go on, okay, well, what's this type of house's average insulation cost?
Yeah, and I think that that's an easy, I think that's an easy, broad disclaimer to make.
Oh, absolutely.
And wording can be finessed, but it should be, you know, some, that there are limitations on, on what is and is not included in this assessment, including physical inspection.
Absolutely. And then, so exterior building features, these are also similar, and that's pretty subjective to the assessor going through and adding it to the methodology. It doesn't exist right now, so it'd be a pretty big push to have them include it. I also want to include a little feature right here, because this is very true with my house, right? My house has these little awnings over the windows. It shades the big windows that are single-pane that this house has. And it does provide some cooling to my home, but that's also seasonal, right? During the summertime, when the sun goes in the perfect pathway, I get that shading. In the wintertime, the sun comes straight through the window. And so.
But that's good, actually, because you want the sun coming through the window.
My living room gets pretty darn hot in the wintertime. It's like a greenhouse, it's amazing. But I still don't turn on the AC, because I'm a true workaholic. I suffer. Anyways, but, but yeah, so it's, it's just not included in the assessment right now. It's seasonal, it's hard. It would just add difficulty to the assessment to include, which would change the replicability.
See, this is where I think the Department of Energy has, you know, is being inconsistent with their own pyramid, because this is about the orient, this is, well, it's not the same as orientation, but it's related. And it's the features on a house that, you know, especially on older homes, that were, that's exactly what they were designed for, was cooling.
The hard part is, is when you are doing the assessment and you're out in the field, what are you taking data about, right? So, they, they can't go on your roof, they, they can't get out there with a ruler and actually see the overhang. If the sun is not out at that moment, how are they going to know how much shading is that awning causing? You're right, it does have impact. Talking to an assessor, the impact's not that great to justify the increased cost that it would incur in the assessment. But I think this is something that could be roped in, in a disclosure, saying that there's features on a house, just as there's features in the vegetation, that could impact energy efficiency of a home. And, you know, that's just perhaps an inherent flaw of a very general methodology. So, maybe this is where I want to ask you guys the question. So, knowing that there's impacts from trees and exterior building features, right? But that we're trying to use this established federal methodology, and it's a very general and broad methodology. Would you be okay if we just acknowledged through a disclosure statement on the scorecards or pursue adding a disclosure statement on the scorecards that there are other additionalities to this score? That should be taken into consideration. Cool. Perfect. Okay, so, the exemptions. So, as I mentioned, exemptions are when you don't have to get a home energy score. This is usually, the, the list of exemptions that are included in administrative, or the, the city code, includes stuff like pre-foreclosures, foreclosures, trustee sales, which is when it's essentially another indication of foreclosure. There's also ones that revolve around like a condemned home. Those, we're going to leave as-is, because, you know, if the home is unsafe to enter, nobody should be going in there to do a home energy score, from our opinion. But we did hear that, that council's interested in having, especially the banks, pay their share, right? So, when the bank is owning the property, making sure that they're not getting a free pass for having a home energy score. So, looking into this, the challenge is in a lot of these pre-foreclosures, trustee sales, short sales, the ownership is kind of a gray area, because the homeowner could still be the resident, right? The title owner. And they're just trying to sell the house at, to come out neutral, to give the money back to the bank, because they're already owing money to the bank, and that's why they're selling their home. That, I think, was the true intent of providing these exemptions, is saying that you don't have to pay anything extra on top of the fact that you're trying to just make back the money that you had in the home to give back to the bank. A proposed modification that we had was requiring foreclosure sales. So, at the time when the home's listed as a foreclosure, it is clearly a bank-owned property, right? The resident may still be in the home, but the bank owns the title at that point. So, requiring foreclosure sales to disclose home energy scores. The only issue with that is that banks also sell these loans between each other. So, finding the, the current. So finding the, the current owner, I call the tax assessor's office. They don't get that information until the home is essentially sold to a different resident. That information, there's like only a few situations where they actually have to disclose that information as different mortgage brokers. So it's just on the compliance side. That might be a little difficult to make sure that we're getting actually that notice of violation out to them. Talking to Tim, Tim Sellers, our Code Compliance Coordinator, he was like, "Yeah, I'll go for them. I have no problem with, with sending them letters. It's just whether or not they're going to comply after those 90 days, we don't know." And then I also added that creates some confusion between the Portland program, Milwaukee program. That's something that we heard, especially from the Portland Association of, Metro Association of Realtors, just that as you're a real estate agent, it's just a different rule that's different between the communities. I don't think it'd be too difficult, but it's just something that, that would potentially occur. And so I would just have to make sure as the staff monitoring this program that we make sure people know.
And the compliance piece with foreclosures too, sort of based on economic conditions on, you know, when the economy's doing the opposite of the forecast.
Sure, right.
So when, when it's doing poorly, you're going to have more foreclosures that may, we might have to spend some more time on, but in...
Do we have a sense of like how many foreclosure sales Portland's had? Or how many exemptions they've given for that?
I'm not sure. They haven't given that many exemptions, period. I think it's only something, last time I checked, it was like 70 exemptions out of the over 10,000 homes that were scored. For Milwaukee, there's not that many foreclosures even on the market right now. So if I'm only for compliance, and we can go into the weeds on compliance, but I'm only checking about 10% of the market as just going through and browsing and seeing for compliance, so 10% of maybe nine homes that are on the market right now, I would maybe check one or two, maybe, depending on the odds. So there's just not that many in Milwaukee. But it's, it's really, the hard part is that for foreclosures, when they're displaying a listing, there might not be a homeowner at the address. So our, our current compliance process is sending a letter in the mail to the residents. And so the bank's not there. And then we can try to go through whatever Realtor's listed on the home listing, but sometimes there's not a Realtor listed. So it's kind of like, the challenge will just be making sure that information's getting to whoever owns the title at that point.
I think it's almost more a political point on some level.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why...
We're unlikely to get great compliance, but...
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And that's why we think that it's, you know, it's not a problem. I mean, if anything, it's easier on staff for some situations because we don't have to get exemption paperwork coming through. And it does send the message saying that, "Hey, just because you're a bank doesn't mean you don't have to comply to this program." It's just, I want to acknowledge that way when we do an evaluation of the program, if it's adopted, if we don't have very high compliance on that, that might just be why. So, thinking about this, are there any changes that you guys would like to make to the originally proposed exemptions? So the originally proposed exemptions included foreclosure as an exemption as well as pre-foreclosure, trustee sale, short sales?
I mean, yeah, it doesn't make sense to me to, to exempt foreclosures when, when it's the, when it's a bank-owned property and that is the...
To do what with foreclosures?
To exempt foreclosures.
Yeah, no, I agree. Banks, banks can do it and, and I don't really care that the real estate agents might find it.
I'm, no, I don't care about that.
Quite frankly, I'm more concerned about financial distress in a person who owns a home who something happens, hypothetically, let's say they lose their job and so they're going to have to move in with mom and dad, so they're going to sell their house. I am more concerned about those kind of people than I am about the banks or any other financial institutions. So I wondered, and one of the questions I had asked you was, you know, are we considering or can we other types of financial distress? Because the only ones that are, we're talking about here are...
The hard part is setting up qualifications for it. So we'll run through our low-income assistance one and we can go into that on how we would qualify those individuals.
I just don't want to do things that are going to cause people like all of us to have to pay more money when they may not have the wherewithal to do that. It's hard enough when you have to sell your own home if it's a financial distress situation. If you're selling it to move up, that's one thing.
Well, and even, and also getting notice of something that isn't your responsibility. I mean, if you are, if you, you know, if, if a home has been listed as foreclosure and you happen to still be living there because that actually happened on my street for quite some time.
Right.
If that, if you're getting the notice because it's just simply being sent to the mailing address and you get this notice that says, "By the way, you're being fined" or "You're going to get fined by the City of Milwaukee because you have it." And you're like, "Wait, I'm not even the owner of this house. They're just letting me squat here."
Right. So that's why, that's why we'd have to have clear language on any sort of public-facing website about it. But that's one of the challenges of pursuing foreclosures as a non-exempt situation is because there is all this weirdness revolving who's in the house, who owns the house, who can actually do the assessment. Because that's another issue is if it's a bank-owned property, the bank does, definitely doesn't have those receipts, but they're not there. And can the bank schedule an assessment for somebody to enter that home with a resident there?
But we can't enforce on a non-owner. So, you know, it, it doesn't, I mean, it...
And so that's the challenge that we're going to have to consider if we remove foreclosures as an exemption, is that there's going to be potentially some tricky situations that we'll just want to make sure that we have, devote a lot of time to, to talking and reassuring somebody through that process.
I mean, it sounds like though, that's the exemption you'd like to remove. It's like, if it's, if it's in foreclosure, then we send the notice to the bank. That's where it's going. We're not giving the exemption for that. So other, but other properties that are in distress, and there was, there was, Natalie mentioned, there's the list, the list of those, we're going to provide that exemption that you don't need to get that Home Energy Score. So, but the bank, we're going to require the bank to do the Home Energy Score. And we're going to seek compliance with the bank.
And the nice part, and the nice part too, is that when a home is listed as a foreclosure, it's clearly defined as a foreclosure. Things like short sales and trustee sales, they're not always, unless you go to a public auction for a home, it's not always listed as such, so we wouldn't know if it's an exemption or not. It, it would be pretty complicated. Foreclosures, it's pretty clear when it's listed and that way we can pursue compliance on it.
Right.
So, so Realtors as the regulated party. So as I mentioned, with banks owning the property and the difficulty of having somebody in the home, that, that some similar issues come up with Realtors. But what was really highlighted when we talked to PMAR was the fact that they have this, the Oregon Revised Statute says that may not essentially use commissions as a way to incentivize or pay for a service for a, a resident. Now, I, I was hoping Justin would be here, so I've sent this off to him and he's looking at it in terms of the, the true legality of it. He had more concerns about other market issues like whether or not it's like a discriminatory practice for the market or whether or not it would have unintended impacts on the market. So for example, if you knew as a Realtor that you'd be having to pay out of your commission sales for other Home Energy Scores, would you choose not to take the lower-cost homes that you wouldn't make as great of a commission on? And that's, we don't know.
For $150?
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing is...
I'm not worried about the market effects.
It's just something that would have to be considered. Additionally, there's a level of engagement that I don't know what the comfort level is. If, if we were going to roll out something like this as a regulated party, would we need to go through an additional engagement session with that industry? And like I mentioned, I think the hard part is that, you know, the, for, for one thing, a real estate agent is not, so there's like licensees for, for selling homes. There's also real estate agents, right? When they comply to a different type of process and organization. There's also builders who sell homes, right? So if a builder's selling a home and they're advertising the home themselves, they're now the ones selling the home, so they're the regulated party for sale by owner, right? Essentially, as we start adding in all of these people selling home, it turns into the seller, right? It's only the people who would be advantageous to work with a real estate agent would have the real estate agent pay for them. So it just starts to get a little complex as we, as we look at them as the regulated party. And I'm particularly interested on, on what Justin would have to say about whether or not it would be allowed.
Well, I mean, I agree with you said in your staff report. Because it's an upfront cost and it's ubiquitous, it doesn't really seem to invoke this Oregon Revised Statute.
And as we hear last time that they were doing it already. So if they're really concerned about that, they wouldn't actually already be paying.
Oh, are they already paying?
We heard that from our last presentation.
So the thing is that they, I think, the way that the statute is written, they cannot be using the commission sales on that home to incentivize, right? So they can't be saying, "If you go with me, I'll pay for this Home Energy Score." I, I believe personally that that's what this means. PMAR says otherwise, but this is out of my playing field.
But if it's broad-based in the city of Milwaukee, I mean, if we could word it that way, where it says, "We have this program and it's paid for by the developer who's selling or the real estate agent who's..."
Or the for sale by owner.
Or the for sale by owner.
Yeah, or the for sale by owner.
So I think it would just be clearly defining who the seller or lister is.
Very well say that it's a bribe.
It's, um, I, I just don't know what, what restrictions we have from a legal side.
This is really a Justin question.
Yes.
You've been participating in these statewide Oregon Department of Energy and nobody else is talking about this?
Then nobody wants to, to try to mess with it, is what I've understood. It's very, it's...
There's only our cities even, AGS right now, so what's to do about it?
It's ridiculous. They should all be willing to do it.
Well, the hard part is that it, for what, for Portland to get the Home Energy Score Program adopted, it took a lot of compromise and engagement with the, the real estate industry, right? They didn't want to pass it, period. And so they worked with them to establish this list of exemptions as well as the process so that way they felt it didn't have a negative impact on their industry. So I think that the idea of them as well paying for the Home Energy Scores was off the table. I also think that Portland's legal team thought that it was a can of worms not to open or best not to open at this time.
Is that based on actual, I mean, I, I want to know if that's, if that, if that's a, if that's based on an actual written response?
Legal issue versus political issue. Is it a legal issue versus a political?
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I want to make sure that we're asking just in legal questions, not political questions because it, that is a completely, that's a totally, that is a dividing line.
I think he's working on it right now based on the communication I've had with him.
He's probably at the planning committee right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably working on that right now.
Well, I, I'm curious though, so why, why should the Realtor or real estate agent pay for...
Did you say why should or why shouldn't?
Why should they pay for that? They're, they're there to provide a service to assist a property owner. I'm, I'm just asking.
We'll have a higher level of compliance because it'll be easier to educate and they'll know.
It's easier to send notice to a listing agent than it is to track down this, this owner or whoever. And I think that we can define, you know, we can, we can create any definition we want for seller. We're not limited by some legal anything.
Right.
We get to decide that. And so including the seller as, as one of the seller options, you know, under the, under the definition of seller as, you know, the listing agent.
We'll have more compliance. We'll have more compliance earlier. People, if the whole point is to let the buyer be fully informed, having it done by the real estate agent is the best way to get it.
Yeah, and some, I mean, I also, I, I was hoping that we would have some information about how many homes, because I thought we talked about this last time, how many homes are actually being sold right now currently in Milwaukee by, by agent or by owner? Because it's usually the vast, I mean, I don't see very many for sale by owner signs.
So that information is available on Redfin if you want to download the sheets of it. I know in aggregate, our peak is probably 120 homes a month at the peak during the summer. And it goes, it drops down pretty drastically. I don't know if that information's broken down for sale by owner, for sale by real estate agent. I think, you know, we could look into it further and definitely ask Justin what concerns he would have. I just, I, I would caution that, that if we did something like this, we just want to make sure to have a very extensive engagement process with the local real estate market because we don't want to dissuade anyone from practicing in Milwaukee. So I think we just make sure we want to partner it with an education and outreach and engagement.
Well, by the same token, if we put it on the burden of the person who owns a home and is living in it, we'd want to have extensive conversation with them ahead of time too. So, you know, any and all of those, we'd want to do that.
The nice part is there's services we can extend to homeowners that we cannot extend to real estate agents, right?
Say that again?
There's services that we can extend to homeowners who own property in Milwaukee that we cannot, I believe we cannot extend to a real estate agent.
A service.
So, low income assess, like low income assessments, for example. Because we don't know what that real estate agent's income is. So maybe that $150 is a large portion of their income. Incentive programs for providing improvements to the homeowners, even if they're just listing their home, but they're maybe not going to intend to move yet. It's just, we would want to make sure we know fully kind of how that would also impact that community, the real estate community. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make sure we understand like why we've been cautious in approaching this option. So...
So we need to find out more.
Do you want us to move forward with exploring real estate licensees as the regulated party? Or is this something that you're for certain you want us to, like this is the default and unless otherwise proven?
I'm not at that point yet. I, I just don't feel like I have enough of an understanding of the legal ramifications. And honestly, I, I am absolutely hearing and concerned about placing an additional burden on someone. There are so many costs. It is so expensive to sell a house, so expensive. I just did it with a house that I inherited.
Oh, yeah.
It was brutal. I mean, it takes thousands of dollars to sell a house. So when you, I'm not saying that $140 doesn't matter.
But it does make a difference.
I just said, I'm not saying it doesn't matter. But I don't want to lose sight of the greater context of, this is a ridiculously expensive and horrible process.
Right. And, and that's, the hard part too is, is that there is a very clear benefit to buyers, right? So you get a big benefit as you're purchasing a home in Milwaukee to see all of these scores.
Right.
The sellers, do you have a comp, like it is a burden on them to pay for this assessment? But that's also similar to when you're selling and buying a home, the real estate agent's fees are usually paid by the seller versus the buyer. The nice part is a lot of this is negotiable. There's nothing that says that you cannot tack on the assessment fee cost to either the seller or the buyer, right? You can negotiate that in the closing costs. There's nothing that prevents that. It's just making sure we have a knowledgeable real estate industry and community to know that that's an option.
Well, and I just think about the, I mean, you maybe aren't fully aware of it, but we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of community members feeling like they haven't been informed about some land use things going on in the city that have been in the pilots multiple times, that have been, you know, you know, that are, we think are fairly well-known out there, but there, you know, there are a lot of people who are saying, "You're going to do what on my block?" So if we have that, then this is just something, I mean, the idea that, that every homeowner is going to, whatever outreach we do, to me, it seems way easier to do the outreach to a limit, a fixed number of real estate agencies than to...
Well, and we do identify them as the pinpoint for a lot of this education. There's a lot of free services and, and webinars and educational tutorials that exist. There are earth advantage as a training. City of Portland has been going around hosting trainings that if somebody is active in the Portland real estate market, they're going to be active in Milwaukee's market. There's a lot of resources for people to learn about it. We would just want to make sure we also extend that to our community members. And I also don't want to, I mean, the reason why we're proposing this program, for one thing, it was adopted in the Climate Action Plan, so obviously you guys have interest in it. But then another part is that 18% emission sector from residential energy, there's not a lot of good ways to curb that except for conservation and energy efficiency programs. And until, I mean, Peter and I are working to explore options to put everyone on renewable energy in Milwaukee. But until then, conservation is the best way to save on greenhouse gas emissions. And even then, once people switch to renewable energy, as you just learned, the more we can reduce the stress load on the grid, the better. And so that's why we're proposing this program to you guys. It's just something that... It's just something that, that's a tool in our toolkit to help us achieve our greenhouse gas emissions goals, especially in a sector that's very hard for us to have any sort of effect on.
Right. And the hope is that we're leading the way.
Absolutely.
And that this is going to become the norm across the region and that across the country we will have houses having home energy score assessments that is just part of the process. And it's part of the, the global education project of teaching people how the way you live on the planet harms it or helps it.
Absolutely. And the nice part is even if you have no interest in energy efficiency whatsoever, there's the utility cost aspect of it. And I personally would love for every listing to have that information in it already just because, just as you know how many bedrooms and bathrooms there are, it'd be great to know the insulation and other assets of the home. Milwaukee is at the front of a wave of a lot of people adopting this program as a solution to meet both carbon goals, but also to reduce grid load. And there's a lot of communities around the nation I've been participating in that group that has over 35 to 50 cities participating to, to implement the same program. Everyone is seeing the same challenges. But the cool part is that Milwaukee stands out because we're a small community who's already taking action on some of the stuff and willing to try it out. But I do want to talk to you guys, I know we don't have a lot of time left, about the low income home energy score assessment.
So did you get an answer to your last question?
So what I'm assuming is that we're going to continue with the legal side of real estate licensees as the regulated party and we'll see what Justin says.
Well, and some of us know counselors in Beaverton that we could start suggesting, why aren't you looking at, at having this?
We can take credit for this being a non-LoL.
I, I, I think there's, there's the fear that the, the, the engagement piece with the Realtor.
It's a really nice way to put it. You mean the pressure?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so low income home energy score assessments. So there was concern with the dollars being paid to contractors doing the assessments for leaving those communities. A nice solution actually lies within Portland's program. Portland contracts exclusively to Community Energy Project. That's a local nonprofit that does both energy efficiency, engagement and outreach. They do incentive programs. They put in free heat pumps in people's homes. They have hotlines available for people with calls and questions. The way Portland works is that they just have a flat fee for an assessment. And when somebody needs to get an assessment done, they qualify, they send them to community, or they send their information to Community Energy Project who then contacts that person and, and schedules that assessment. They also work with a lot of disadvantaged communities, a lot of diverse communities. They're, I met with them previously. They're a fantastic group. Inhabit used to be really similar. Inhabit now delegated those responsibilities, or I should say, Community Energy Project took up that opportunity to be the, the home energy score assessor. So if you've heard them, inhabit and Community Energy Project, they kind of work really closely. So the way Portland does it is they have a list of qualifications and then, or you can do an attestation. The hard part is that's a lot of paperwork flying through. They have a secure system set up. We would want to streamline it to fit Milwaukee's administrative capabilities at this point. And so we thought a great opportunity was to have people qualify through the existing utility assistance program. So they already have to, people are generally pretty familiar with that paperwork. We already have a database of people who are qualified through the utility assistance program. We could put out information on it on utility bills for people to be aware of. And there's a secure system for people to submit paperwork to and personal identifying information. I could work the finance, work with the finance department to talk to them to see who's qualifying. If somebody is not already participating in that program, they can sub, qualify for the utility assistance program, check a box, say, I also want a free home energy score. For those months that they're still in the house, they're going to get a discounted utility rate. So it's kind of like a win-win for people participating. The nice part too is that, like I said, it's, it's more secure with their information. Otherwise they'd be having to essentially send it to me and through my inbox, which isn't the same type of system. And then once they qualify for that free home energy score, we can work with a single contractor like Community Energy Project to then go do those assessments and provide those services. And then that way they just invoice us. And I've already talked to them. They would be comfortable setting up a really similar baseline fee and that wraps up their administrative costs in it. If we wanted to do extended outreach, you know, we would, we could set aside resources to do continued outreach for that program, talking to Community Energy Project. That I think is the one thing that they recommended was just increasing the amount of outreach of the availability of this service.
There's about 180 customers, utility customers that take advantage of.
Peter, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, there's, there's about 180 utility customers that are on the low assistance program that the city offers, so.
And not all of them are probably homeowners.
Right.
And, and we would want to make sure, no matter what, whether, what process we choose, there's a lot of services and incentive programs that exist through Energy Trust of Oregon and other nonprofits for low income and disadvantaged communities. We want to make sure that people are aware that those services exist. We already want to make sure that they're aware through our housing affordability work as a city. So it just aligns, we want to make sure that there's extended outreach for other, so say somebody does want to make an improvement or retrofit in their home. Cool part is Community Energy Project can help hook them up or at least explain the financing on it. But we would also want to come with a suite of other possibilities for them. And that information, I believe, is already on our housing affordability pages. But if we developed a home energy score program, we'd have, I'd create a new suite of different pages all about the program and that would be on one of them. So as defined, where we have the one pathway of qualification through our utility assistance program, and then once somebody qualifies, we work with a local nonprofit or assessor that has experience working with communities, both disadvantaged, diverse or low income. Does this framework for a low income assistance program sound like a good possibility for this program, based on your opinions?
Just me.
Awesome. Cool. And then I did hear that there was questions about compliance. And so the compliance, this is how Portland has theirs set out with a little bit different on the backend for how Tim and I would work together.
Except that they haven't fined anybody yet.
So they're just starting. So they had difficulties because everything for their home energy score program was housed within Bureau of Planning Sustainability. And so they weren't working through code enforcement or compliance. So they had to figure out the pathway to find people and collect those fines.
And when you're talking compliance or non-compliance, I just want to make sure and ensure that anybody that happens to be listening to this, you're talking about doing the housing, doing the assessment, not necessarily changing all the thing. I mean, let's say they come up with, well, you really, you know, new windows and you need to put more insulation.
You do not have to do anything.
Whether to do that or not, but at least they still have the home energy score.
You do not have to do anything that's recommended on that scorecard whatsoever.
But if you do, you boost your abilities, especially, you know, if you're now in the process of trying to sell your home.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we're hoping people will do that. I think there's like a 12 to 36% retrofit rate based on different studies done on home energy efficiency certification processes. But for compliance, all it is, is when you have a publicly, a listing, like you see right here with the Zillow listing, there's a URL in the bulk of that text and that's just a URL to the home energy score report. That's compliant right there. And so that's what I'll be checking for. 10% of the listings in a given timeframe, probably either bi-weekly or monthly, and then letting Tim know, okay, I saw this property address, it doesn't have a home.
So does that mean you're going to have to go through all the listings all the time?
There's a process for it, but yeah.
But.
It says random audit of 10%.
To me, additional cost, additional staff time, additional moves.
So that in the first staff report, I, we broke down the hours and the relative workload impacts. It doesn't take long for Milwaukee's market. 10% of Milwaukee's market at the peak is 12 homes. 12 homes split between two weeks. It takes maybe five to 10 minutes max if there's a whole compliance process. It gets pretty streamlined and it doesn't take long at all.
So that would be for like houses like all of ours that currently exist and whatever. But what about like the new developments that are going in? And so the developers selling the homes, how did, I don't know how those get listed.
New development has, there's a specific home energy score assessment for new development. They get a scorecard that looks similar, except it's a one shut, a one-sided scorecard. It just doesn't have the recommended improvements on the back of it, just because, I mean, the, it's a new construction. But it has the utility cost, it has the carbon cost, it has all that information on the front of it. And so they would still need to be compliant if they're publicly advertising that home for sale.
Yeah.
And so the compliance structure as it is, has that 90 days with a $500 fee following. And I see that we are running out of time. But, so there is some flexibility with those 90 days as well as the fee structure. And that's what we were seeking guidance on was, do you, would you recommend or would you be interested in shortening or extending that compliance window and then as well as the fee structure?
I think the fee should, I mean, why is it more than, I mean, is that like triple the, the cost of an actual assessment?
So the thing is 90 days to comply, the amount of assessors that are in the market right now, you can get a home energy score same day, right? And it doesn't take long, they're not in the home for long. So they have 90 days to comply, which a lot of times 90 days is actually over the amount of time a house will sit on the market. So it's pretty generous.
Yeah, there was just an Oregonian article and I meant, I meant to try and look it up, but I saw it about two weeks ago that was listing like the 15 mark, you know, parts of town where the homes are selling the fastest and Milwaukee was number 14. And I think they said average days on market was like 22 or 19, something in there.
We haven't had it 90 days.
So yeah, a lot of them are going to be long, long ago sold.
And so that's why Portland in the future is interested in shortening that window. And then the way that the $500 fee works is that's $500 after a notice of violation. So notice of violation arrives in the mailbox, you have 90 days to fix it. If I caught it in compliance or Tim, we'd be the ones checking up on it. We would of course preclude that with a lot of outreach and education. Of course, let people have the opportunity to change first. They get a $500 fee. And then actually the way the code is written, there's 180 days following that before they get another $500 fee. So that's, you know, a quite a broad amount of time.
You can sell a house three times.
And they're not living here anymore because they sold their house.
And that's the difficulty when it comes to compliance.
The agent hasn't really gone anywhere though.
Real estate agent pay it.
Yeah, exactly. That's another reason for doing agents.
The $500 fee though, with the exception, I think of our plastic bag ban, penalty, matches, all of them, right? All of our other penalties. That's the standard.
Talking with Tim, you know, and, and Tim is all about simplicity and efficiency because he's just the best code compliance coordinator ever. If we were to follow a similar style to Milwaukee's code enforcement, it would be $500 a day following that notice of violation.
It'd be $500 a day?
A day. That is more typical of how our fine structure works. So this is actually a variation to provide a larger grace period, knowing that the home sale process is complicated. Sometimes wires get mixed and mail gets thrown away. And so that, that, we're especially working with the industry stakeholders as well as community stakeholders, that's how that 90 days was established. Portland is just now seeing a decrease in compliance because a lot of people are now familiar that 90 days is, you know, long enough to sell a home. And so.
They are seeing a decrease in compliance.
They are.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
And so they are ramping, but, but they have not been fining anyone yet. So, so now they're implementing fines and they're hoping to get up, back up to 80% compliance.
So I just want to walk through what happens. You've got a house that's, you know, it's been on the market for 20 days. It's pending in Milwaukee. You go through the listings and you see, wait a second, this doesn't have a home energy score.
I have a flowchart for that. It was also included on your first staff report too, if you want to pull it up.
Yeah, I remember that one.
So how it would work is your, for me on a process side, the home is advertised for sale. And then I would check that random weekly or bi-weekly or monthly sample of listings. I'd create into random number generator to figure out number six home and number 10 home is the one I'm checking. I'd go through public listings, I'd find those homes. So that way it's fair and equitable. I would check to see if it has a home energy score. If it does, awesome, I close the case in my personal database. If it doesn't, I can send a written notice of warning to the Realtor, but then I inform Tim in code compliance, that crosses into his territory, to submit a notice of violation. That notice of violation enters into the home seller or Realtor's hand. They have 90 days to remedy. Within those 90 days or even after those 90 days, whenever Tim's process works, we check to see if the compliance issue is resolved. If it is, fantastic. He closes it in his database and he informs me and I wrap it all up with a bow. If it's not, the compliance issue is not resolved, then they get a fine imposed after that 90-day grace period. And then essentially we go back into a loop. Have they complied? Have they not? And that's how it goes until they do comply and then he closes it and then I close it. And that's the process for keeping it managed and evaluated.
And so the compliance, if they, if they have closed, I'm just trying to come up with the worst case scenario here.
Yeah, yeah.
So they closed, they've moved out of the house, they still didn't comply. How do you get them into compliance? Do they have to navigate that with the, the new homeowner to get in there to do the home energy score?
So that's a challenge is we only have, the only available information is the Realtor's email and the pub, the address, right? The homeowner name is not on there and we don't know where they've moved off to. I can pull up that information from the tax assessor for when they currently lived in that house to get names, but that's about it.
Yeah.
Tim says he will find them. I, I don't know his process for that. But that is a challenge that Portland has been seeing is, is once somebody moves, how do you, how do you get that information? And that's just a challenge.
Post office is not too good around here, is it?
It would be, it would be another step for staff, but I kind of, I'd kind of like to see like maybe an intermediate, like a 30-day notice. And if you do it, if you don't do it in 30 days, you maybe have a $100 fine.
Yeah.
And then maybe the 90 days and the bigger fine or something. Because I mean, I'd like to try and incentivize getting it done, but when it still has some meaning. At 90 days, in the vast majority cases, it's going to have no meaning.
Well, if you can get compliance in the 30 days by doing that, then you may actually save some staff time because you don't have.
The second.
Whatever, whatever it is that Tim does.
I'm still not sure. I don't know if I'm frightened or very interested.
Right, yeah, yeah.
No, yeah, we can explore doing either a, an outreach as a measured outreach and engagement opportunity to make sure we contact them with information about it at 30 days at least. Because sometimes I think a lot of times the homeowner isn't aware this program exists or they're not, the Realtor is not the one informing them about it. And so if anything, it would discourage Realtors or encourage them to be more knowledgeable of the program and making sure that they're provided by services.
And that's the other reason, I mean, that's one of the other reasons.
Yeah, if they had to pay it, it would be a lot more.
Everything we talk about.
It, it, it does certainly improve compliance.
It will absolutely improve compliance, yeah.
So just because I know that we are now 10 minutes over, I just want to say thank you and we'll look at exploring those options that you guys are interested in. And hopefully we will be able to modify the program and bring it to you back in September to see what other, either feedback you would have or if you're interested in adopting the program. Until then, I will try to continue to research to see and pester Justin to see what his opinion on some of these subjects are. Yeah. Are there any other questions that you guys have?
I, I do want to get just another question for, for Justin is the idea that I think that we need to define, you know, clearly make sure, you know, what a listing is. Because, you know, I, I actually have very good, well, two good examples. One, a very long time ago, I put a make me move price on Zillow when I was first exploring Zillow and looking to see what it meant. My house has never been for sale. So if I get a notice, I mean, that, that just doesn't make any sense. I mean, to what Elvis is talking about here. You know, also I almost bought a house once because someone had a sign. I was really, I, I, it was really interesting. They had like a, you know, a for sale sign and a phone number in the window and it like literally didn't say anything else about it. But, but, and no one had called them and they told me when I called and I called the number and I said, are you selling your house or what was that? And they said, yeah, we're selling our house. You're the first person who's ever called in a year. So.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. I mean, we have to make sure that we're actually defining what a listing is. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think that having a sale sign in the yard that doesn't actually clearly define what is for sale. They could have been selling a car for a while.
So the thing with the, the public facing sign. So the thing with the public facing signs is that even on staff, on my side, there's no way I know that house is for sale, because I'm not driving around Milwaukee looking for signs. So.
But on a Zillow make-me-move, you have a button. It's either listed for sale or not.
The hard part is not us listed for sale. There's two different things here. I think the hard part about that, and we definitely would want to explore it, is that, is that a definable sale situation? Or is that a software-specific, service-specific, like, is that only Zillow? Or is there, is Redfin doing it or another?
If it's on MLS, you know, listing, it's listed for sale. If it's got a number, it's listed for sale. If it's, you know, I mean, I think we can come up with a definition that is broad enough to capture those things, but also not so broad that we're capturing people who are not selling their homes.
So when somebody sells their home themselves, do they still get a listing number?
I mean, if they're, if they're, I don't know that they necessarily do. There is a way to get one.
We can come up with a clear definition. That'll be partly code.
We're not going to catch everyone.
No.
But I also don't want to, I don't want to dragnet either.
Sure.
Well, there's also the way that the, the way that the code. People who are not selling their homes.
The way that the code is written offers a lot of wiggle room for discretion on the staff side, right? If we reach out to somebody with a notice of violation and they call me in a panic, there is so much, like, ability for us to coach and educate and provide outreach without resorting to a fine. Like I said, 90 days in the home sale process is a pretty broad window. So even if we accidentally caught somebody who was like, "Oh, I'm not actually selling my house. I just, you know, have a for-sale sign that I threw in my front yard accidentally," right?
How did I get there? But I really don't even think I had to prove ownership when I did that. I literally was just like on Zillow one day, and I was like, "Make me move, sure."
Well, and I think that there's going to be a lot of people playing around.
Nobody asked me a fight. No, I didn't have to provide any.
Yeah, they didn't verify that I owned the person.
If you've got something in your bail.
I'm going to do that to you today.
I'd be like, "Call to a staff member." I mean, that's, that's the fortunate part, is we'd have a direct line to me or Tim, and we'd be on the same page. And the code is written in a way that provides flexibility in those situations.
And also clear definition.
And same with the situations of exemption and financial distress. There's a lot of flexibility.
Well, it's hard work, good work.
Thank you. I am opening doors into the mortgage industry. I'm opening my own business. It's funny, my husband actually works for the mortgage industry, and so I've been calling him at work, being like, "All right, you have to define this framework." Which is great.
Good resource.
But, yeah, so I also shared this on the slide deck. This is, I just quickly made a flowchart for the process, right? So if we're going to have somebody go through the process, this is like the questions that they'd have to ask themselves to get a home energy score. I really want to stress that it's very simple to get a home energy score if you're going to be participating in it. Leila had a meeting with us, and she did it. She was like, "Oh, yeah, I forgot I had to do that." And she pressed a button, and she had one scheduled for that day. It's pretty simple, and it's a simple sheet of paper. We just want to make sure we get the program framework right, so it works for the community. And so I thank you guys for your input.
Can you send us that slide?
Yes, it will be available on the slide deck that we're going to be sharing, but I can also send you guys a copy of the PDF.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry for keeping everyone over.
All right, well, I think that that's it, so, all right, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you very much.